Yes, Chair, we're on.
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion from our position, please. I need a second.
Second.
Second. I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Jackford, seconded by Councilman Chisholm. How for a question, please?
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We are back calling the order. I have finished our executive update and also item number four A. I'd like to go on down to the new business, item four B, Second Chair Red Eagle. Name it.
Chairman. I'll just read you all what Bill's put down here. As you all may be aware, the D E N D, Energy and Mineral Development, will not be involved with Nate in Houston anymore. If the council would like to continue to be involved, we need to pay for all the things ourselves, including booth space and materials. Attached is the old book that was developed by D E N D for you to look at if you're interested. Now's the time to begin the process. And there's a little bit of expense there in Houston that happened in February and August, I think.
Yes, sir. We are targeting February.
So, any comments on that?
I do have one. We actually had talked about this was going to come up on the agenda. We are looking at the cost of a booth. I'd like to support the council because we need some of you to manage it. I think that it's an endeavor where we'd like to take care of. There will be an updated version of the book. If that's not it, at any case, we're looking at getting it and also the, we need a booth ourselves. We don't need to go through the nation, try to get there. Let's just get one. And then we can set it up there. We can set it up. Council and I went down to Oklahoma Expo and it was quite big. And we need to go there and then we can set it up our summit. So we've used it, we'll be using it three times. I'd like, if the council agrees, we, we need everything. And it'll be ours. And they won't carry it off and won't run into anything else. It'll be ours. With that being said, do we need a form resolution today?
To spend money, yes.
Sir, well, Counsel.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I don't know what the urgency is to have to make a decision today. The money has to do with, there are a lot of variables. The booths, this is one of the largest oil shows in the country, if not the world. And for people listening in, this is a convention of oil and gas industry where people bring their drilling and development prospect to the convention in search of venture capital to fund their ventures. So there's capital, people, capital dollars there, and oil and gas companies, as well as different vendors that have services and products that support the oil and gas. It's a real important venue for us to attend. I agree with that. But I guess the point is if we're going to talk about having a resolution to finance, to provide the funding, there's different booths, different locations, costs a different amount, the sizes, so many sort of feet, if you're on this row, the middle row, this section, in this building or this building, there's all different kinds of scenarios. So I think maybe a resolution to, to maybe a general one for us to, to sponsor a booth at the convention at maybe not a cent dollar amount.
I got an idea. Let's just do a resolution that we're going to look in availability and options we have to represent the L C S Minerals Council at night. And then we'll come back to the council with our options that we can review, exactly what you said, of the positioning and amount we would spend at X amount, because it will be different going to the different spots. Yes, sir. Counsel.
Same here, save forty percent of it approved that way. And then after that, it goes up.
It does go up. We check. Counsel.
I would, in February, myself and Bill, I would encourage council to go, whoever's interested, it's, it's just, just a lot of activity and this is ninety-five percent of our check that we give to our shareholders is oil and mainly oil and oil and gas. So just, I met a lot of folks there, I mean, they're hustling, this thing says eighty-one percent of the deal, the people there make deals that day. So, you know, hopefully we'll have some things together to present, try to sell it. Try and sell it, because these guys are down there, I mean, they're the investors and they got the money and they, so I would encourage we go tonight, next year.
What would our resolution need to say? We can.
I, if it were me, I would do a general resolution to purchase a booth at night and all supplies needed. That way it's all covered in one. I don't cap it and don't put a specific.
No money at all?
Yes.
Please.
I'll make a motion to put this Lacy Reynolds judge there.
Yes.
Second.
Second. I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Redcorn, seconded by Councilman Jackford. Any discussion, Counsel?
You guys mentioned that one, Oklahoma Two, could we include that one as well in this motion to look at the possibility?
On oil and gas expo, we really did good last time with the, and the rest of us went down there.
We did good.
And the summit.
Are you?
Expo. Okay, Expo. Thank you.
Just to be clear, yours, my, I could be wrong, but you're saying if we pay for the booth, supplies and everything, we can enjoy this forty percent. We pass that resolution now. All right. And then maybe another resolution to go to.
Oklahoma One, which I've been through several times. And we sponsor the summit.
We used to sponsor booths there and send our staff, whoever wanted to go.
Well, look, we're going to probably send you. I know you didn't get the Oscar, but it is your birthday, I want to wish you happy birthday.
All I heard was your name everywhere.
I ain't hoping that by.
Yeah, that's.
Counsel.
Yeah, okay, so to reserve a booth, we could save forty percent today. So I mean, this is kind of late notice. But the booth, we, we would have to know which booth. And the price range of these booths is tremendous. So we would have to, in order to take advantage of this, we'd have to know what booth would we got.
Yes, sir, but this doesn't state an actual value on it. Would, what we could do is give the resolution where we can review the pricing. We'd send out an email, y'all check it off, see what you feel is correct.
I'm looking at page seven of our booklet, page three of this publication, and it says through April the fifth, we can, we can have an expiration in production booth for five hundred dollars. Is that right?
Yes, and they'll assign the booth in place and then after that point, five hundred.
They've got to sponsor a road there, which is the five dollars.
Well, this is stuff that we need to talk about. This is really, location of where our booth is is extremely critical. So I've been to this lots of times, twice a year, and there's parts of this thing that you won't ever get.
So we.
You know, there's some of it's in the building behind the other building. But.
The resolution, if we keep it as we have it, will allow you to go in and look at the floor and bring out the price.
That has to be done before midnight tonight, I guess. Today's April fifth, isn't it? It's today. We need to talk about this today.
Well, I see one thing.
I think that all of us should be making this decision and not just, you know.
Well, that was going to be the options available to all of us anyway. It's not like we're recreating.
I would think our chief of staff could select the best possible booth.
I know.
Five hundred dollars.
I know.
But that's me.
It's your motion.
Yeah. What she said gives us the ability to enjoy the forty percent if that's not.
Okay, we're not.
If it does, then we lose that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, can we pick a booth now and then change it later? Is that an option? Maybe we want to upgrade to a different road, maybe a more expensive road?
The way I'm reading it is the, you get the, five hundred dollars gets you the booth in the preferred section. If you don't purchase by today, then you get the outlying sections.
You said preferred section. Where is the preferred section?
Whatever that's.
Next page. Well, there's a sponsor road, that's all I see, sponsorships.
The blue ones are the next ones coming in.
The blue ones?
Right.
There's blue at the top, blue at the bottom.
Right.
And blue in the middle, which blue is?
All of them would be the next ones coming in. They're going to do it, it's my understanding, and I don't, I'm not sure on this, that when they come in, they're going to assign them the.
Which one is easy? Do we get to pick one? When we send in our five hundred dollars, do we get to pick a booth? So we have to. I'm sorry. I mean, okay, here's, be okay, they've already, I guess they've already paid for thirty-eight, thirty-five. Do we want next to them or do we want next to X D O? Do we want next to Nuton Energy?
I want, I want the.
Thirty-four, excuse me, I'm speaking thirty-four, thirty-five, I'm on next to ConocoPhillips for five hundred. Walt raised you five hundred.
I knew you would.
I knew you would.
Your call.
Well, I'm in favor of sending the five hundred dollars and grabbing one. And maybe we could change it later, maybe we can.
Thirty-five, four, thirty-five.
Maybe we could sell it.
Maybe that's five hundred.
Now, that's what I know, when you started raising me, I kind of wondered, you still farming out.
Foster oil company.
This is for next year's.
Yeah, yeah.
For February.
Maybe that's just.
Dear, let's, uh.
Right, all I need is two available next February.
Quick word.
Forty February next.
Thirty-four, thirty-five, right next to Conoco and Drilling and Melburn Oil Company, which is owned by Circus Circus.
And they got some cash. It's right here.
I'm with you.
Councilman Jackford. That's what I'm thinking.
I dream casinos, actually, that's prime location. I'm stealing off everyone, go see the big guys. I'm telling you, they're going to be coming to see the star of Killer Flower Moon. I'm banking on it.
Is this resolution called for five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Actually, it doesn't unless.
She said.
It's booth, to purchase booth space, I think, and materials.
Five hundred today, so give me the spot.
We're not putting that specifically in there.
But you are going to get the booth.
Yes.
Call for a question. Bill, you're going to have to hand to this, but this.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move on down to the class one resolution.
A E L.
Item number six A.
Okay, so we do have some, they weren't going to be here, but we do have some present.
Yes. Gentlemen, please join us. You'll have to do an introduction, I know we don't need one for the record and our shareholder.
Just, um.
Thank you for your patience.
Hey, you all do yourself.
Short introduction and you can go.
This is Wayne Miller.
Wayne Miller with SCS Engineers.
Douglas Floyd, Attorney for A E L.
I'm Todd Greig.
We do that. Thank you, John.
We've recently, I own a well location chain. We thought that it was important that the council be advised of the change. Have you got the right one? Nope.
I'm not a map anywhere, I love maps. Yeah, he's got the right one. This is the one we have that day. Don't link to the dangerous place.
We don't know what's important or not, Council.
It's all important, sorry. My God, even our person.
And you'll decide what's important.
Yes, sir.
The location that had been proposed to the council before was in the southwest quarter of section thirty-one, township twenty-north, range eleven east. The new proposed location is in the southeast corner of section thirty-six, twenty-ten. It's the new location, or section adjacent to the old location, or section, it's on the west side. It's closer to one hundred and seventy-seventh West Avenue than the old. It was down on the recognition on the, of the engineers, and I think their recognition makes sense. The reason that we think it's a good idea, which from our standpoint, it's a lot cheaper just a dirt that build a road in the back one, that's about seven hundred thousand dollars, and is going to kick up dust for a number of months, which is going to make the neighbors happy. And would have continued dust for now, as the truck will transit back to the location that we've been proposed. This new one will allow us to just exit off one hundred and seventy-seventh West Avenue, travel a few hundred feet to the well, to the tanks that'll be there, offloaded, and the well will supply, well, I'm sorry, the tanks will supply the well. In addition to the fact that it saves money, it's safer and less dust, we think we'll get more business. The late stage would be supplied by us, but we're going to, we're going to make more money and the nation's going to make more money. It's going to depend on outside sources of bringing none hazardous waste in this well. So that said, in a.
How hazardous?
No, I said not hazardous.
I'm sorry, guys, I'm sorry. I didn't sleep last year, thank you. Let me ask one question, do you own this property?
Yes. Oh, my answer right there.
Don't be complaining on yourselves.
Oh, if it's only.
Oh, I build roads, he builds nations. Believe me, I went to Pahuska and tore down their roads and left them in mud for two years. I stopped the dances, so.
It's called Lucid.
Ah, yes, sir. Is there anything you can add to that?
No, we're ready for questions.
Is it the same depth and everything, all criteria?
From the surface to the bottom is the same.
And all of it will be permitted to this effort to.
Yeah. We, I think we've told the council before that nothing, no standards will be lower than the E D A recommends.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Because I'm going to give a speech about that, we're going to tell them wherever we're even in this environmental protection that you're giving us, your company.
Is this one seventy-seven?
It.
Is one seventy-seven horizontal or?
Is it a curve line on the left side?
That's it.
That sort of white thick line, that's one seventy-seven west avenue. And there's already an exit there because the space you see with all of those circles around it, those are gas wells that take off the gas generated by the old landfill. That's the old landfill you're seeing on the east side of one hundred and seventy-seventh West Avenue. This property, the wells on, the proposed wells on, is not permitted part of the landfill long as the A E L, that was never permitted.
Yes, sir.
And that's where the well was proposed, and you can see it's pretty close to one hundred and seventy-seventh West Avenue, where you put the tanks north of it.
And that north south road to the, to the, to the west, that's one hundred and seventy-seven?
Yes, sir.
And that, that goes all the way down to four twelve?
Right.
Which didn't show up here.
No, but that new construction's just off the map.
It will roughly half mile off four twelve, one four twelve there.
Anderson Road is on the north side of this section.
Yes, it is.
Thirty-four and thirty-six, down to east and west.
That's not that far from the old school, is it?
That's correct, the old school's right there on Anderson.
Yeah, we have some production just right there, old production, Counsel.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. What, all these gas wells that are taking the gas off the landfill, what, what's done with that gas?
It runs a couple of generators that generate electricity and it's sold to what, the municipal?
It's currently generating three point two megawatts of electricity continuously, and that is then sold to Oklahoma Municipal Power Authority. And the proceeds of that, we have actually been funding our proceeds to the local elementary school that you mentioned, to help them pay for their electric bills.
I'm glad you said that.
It's a great, great program, and it's not polluting the atmosphere with the methane that would normally escape into the atmosphere and deplete our ozone. Is that done with kind of blankets on top of the landfill? Well, we closed the landfill and then you still get evaporation and it goes into the atmosphere, which is bad. It's already covered with. And so what we do with this waste energy plant, we put a vacuum on this, on the whole hill. The methane's lighter than air, so when we get that gas coming in, we can convert it into a fuel that can burn those engines and turn a generator. Yes, sir.
Is that Municipal Power Authority, is that, I think that's the one that powers Pahuska, isn't it?
It sure is.
It is.
Absolutely is, but very well, that's good thought.
Chairman of the Pahuska Village, we need to remember that, that if they're allowed to do that for the Anderson School, I used to play at Indian Camp, that's a trivia question.
Yes, sir.
I had to, the cast boys didn't show up.
Have you guys, I mean, is Oklahoma D Q or whoever involved with this well?
Well, they are part of the permitting process, as we indicated before, but the EPA has the full jurisdiction over this. And as Doug stated, no, none of our standards will be any less than what the standard is for the EPA. And our, our, our goal here is to get your vote approval to move towards an easement with the B I A so that we can get the nation paying for their proceeds.
One last thing. The landfill east of one hundred and seventy-seventh West Avenue is a closed landfill. It's, nothing is buried there anymore. We solidify some liquids that buried once solidified, they're buried on the west side.
On the west side, where we had to take some of that item last time we.
Yes, sir, in fact, I just got a request this morning from Christopher La Bullier.
Yes.
He is representing the council, mineral council, and they're going to be disposing of an old tank farm and some waste from that. If we are perproved for this well, those liquids would able to be going into that well in the future. And of course, we don't charge the nation for their, their waste that comes to us.
Well, you can't, because they got to pay for it when they clean the tanks out, strap it. But we can understand that part, and that's where I, I don't want to get too far out in the weeds here, and stay a little focused on getting this location changed. Do we just approve, you're allowed to go change the location in this case?
Our vote today is just, in our opinion, is just to move forward with our easement with the B I A. The location difference is within our property and we don't see it as significant.
Do you need the other resented, or is there a chance you'll ever go back?
The B I A has not had our information yet, so.
Okay, so it's not even there.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair.
B I A will not proceed unless we have this agreement with you.
So we haven't actually entered into a, a contract with them or agreement. In our last meeting, we did make that proposal of the royalty that would be paid.
I remember. Between the judges, what do you think? I don't have no problem with that.
Counsel. Yes, Counsel.
I'd like to, I mean, I'll ask a question, can we chat Raleigh on this? That's my question.
In other words, you want to table it, Raleigh?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Raleigh what he thinks.
I, I believe it was in, he'd already reviewed the other one.
He did.
Yeah, because I had talked to him about us assuming not only what they think we can assume, but just what we had just talked about, that we are in other areas and the B I A needs to go along with us, as they well have just said, that'll work out the document. How about we do the application and then they go back and we have Raleigh review it?
That's fine. Just long as we get a review.
No, we, we will have a chance to see it.
Now, that's our intention, is to supply all of our permitted things to the L C S council and the B I A.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, I did entertain the motion at this time to allow them to change the location to.
I don't need a resolution for an easement.
That's right. Then is it going to be under the two fourteen, or is it going to be under a leasing? Oh, no, I remember, it, it needs to be under that lease, worded for us.
It would be a, it's a, it's a.
Right now.
It's a class one, it's, it's a class one injection well, easement, is it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Paul.
Similar to what we're doing over at Newchera, which used to be the last.
Yes, sir.
This is a class one permit.
Would you make that into a motion?
Do we need it?
Yes, we do.
Well, it had terms of so much per barrel.
Yep.
Is that right? Was there a minimum? Yes, we got only proposed a minimum to be paid in advance each year, but then after we hit that minimum, then there'll be additional per barrel.
Royalty payment.
Yeah, royalty payment.
Yeah, we can't use the other word here.
Hey, that's not what you're voting on today, that can be settled later. We're just looking for your approval to go to the B I A and approach them with our easement request, and then that way you can get your royalty paid.
Disposal.
So, so the royalty amount hasn't been negotiated. That's correct. You've made an offer, we have, we have discussed the offer among ourselves since you were here last. That's correct. But you're wanting us, so they're requesting an easement with a blank, fill in the blank royalty?
No, sir, the United States government will decide what the payment is on any, any injection.
Okay. Well, that's negotiated by this, by us?
Well, then it'll be whatever the going rate is that we have on the others.
Well, no, no.
But call some, what you, don't put me in.
No, I don't want to do what they're.
Yes, sir.
So it's one thing, all we can do is in concept that we agreed to issue them an easement, that we, we're leaving the royalty amount up in the air?
What was the royalty amount on the other, do you have?
We're not doing the same thing as the other one. Let's not talk about the other one. This is a negotiation. We don't want to talk about the other one.
That's not.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay.
Do you have the numbers you'd like, do you have the numbers you'd like to plug in?
Well, hey, they, I kind of liked the number they threw out, but we ought to talk about it, you know? And that's just it, we need to get together and talk about it, and maybe do a little bit of research and get back. I think we need to table this, but I think we need to table this subject. Good with that. Now that we know what's going on, they want, they've got an offer on the table right now requesting an easement for a class one injection well. They've offered us a, a minimum royalty and a price per barrel when it goes above that minimum amount. They've cut to us today to change the location of the well that they want to use for the Uh, they've come to us today to change the location of the well that they want to use for the class one location. Which we don't, apparently don't have an issue with that and it makes sense, uh, because for a lot of reasons, I guess. Uh, but what we, what we need to do is acknowledge that, that this offer's still on the table and we need to talk about whether or not we want to make a counter offer or not. And I say let's table it, but let's be diligent and let's get together and, and, and make a decision sooner than the last. I make the motion to table.
Second.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Sit there with gas that are going to certain, certain power companies, do we get, do we get a royalty on that gas too?
Uh, no, sir, it's, it's not from oil and gas, it's, uh, through the, the waste degradation. So it's, it's a renewable energy that doesn't fall under that.
It's still part of our mineral state though.
I'm sorry?
It's still part of our mineral state.
It's not set surface.
It's above surface.
It's above surface.
It's above surface.
Yeah. It's a.
But it comes from a surface. I'm just curious about it.
It's not much.
Well, it's basically, it's basically on degradation of the municipal solid waste. As it decomposes, methane's being generated, roughly fifty percent methane, the rest is oxygen, C O two, the nitrogen gas. We take it to this real old natural gas plant, it's being treated, pulls out the other gases, probably ninety nine point eight percent methane that we have.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious.
And in our, I just want to add that in our proposal of the royalty, we made it in excess of what the current well in, in Bartstall. Well, that's what, you know, that's why I didn't want to get into it, uh, until sometime when we get the chance to visit among ourselves. Uh, I'm aware that, that this is a, uh, a different negotiation than what we already have.
We have a, we're motion to table?
That I, you know, yeah, the motion's on the floor, it's been seconded to table this subject matter indefinitely, I guess, but I would like to, uh, I'd like for us to commit ourselves and to, to, uh, come to the decision soon. Yeah, I could, no.
For the seventeen, seventeen to.
Yeah, let's do it before the seventeen, our next meeting is the third Wednesday of the month. Uh, we'll try to communicate amongst ourselves. The concept of us granting the easement is pretty much universally accepted, it's just a matter of we got to talk about the terms. And I'd like.
Call for a question.
Do the seventeen, do that.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Bigwars?
Yes.
Councilman Tishewala?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
And thank you, gentlemen, we'll be right back with the best part and we'll go from this diagram.
Are you all going to draft the new, uh, easement with the, with the new location?
I, I think the B I A will be.
Yeah, they have.
Oh, it hasn't been drafted, yeah. It hasn't even been drafted and they'll, they'll draft these, or not.
Uh, we did that for a living, we, I got ninety words.
You know, I wonder if we could, you know, if we could ask the superintendent to give us a, a draft. Well, they're probably waiting on a resolution before.
They can't even get, we, we had, yeah, excuse me, excuse me, I have a floor. Mr. Lynn did that, Mr. Trump, did he even get in to the B I A a while ago?
No, superintendent is out.
Okay, that, that would be mine, you said.
Please, uh.
Thank you, I, I thank you.
Okay, would you recirculate their offer to all of us?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So that we can get busy.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. The next item on the six B, election committee, second chair ready.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, last, uh, first part of the week, we had a preliminary election committee meeting. Felt like it was deserving, we brought to the council on, on the election in around two years, two and a half years.
Two years.
And, uh, uh, as we recall, uh, there were, there were some flaws, there were some, there were some issues there were, uh, on the last election. There was some, uh, ballots that were, that were stuck down to the post office that weren't counted. Uh, there was a lot of questions about that, there were some also some questions at the B I A, uh, uh, on who was eligible to vote. Just issues like that, that was up, we talked about and then brought it up to the council just to see, I think it's very important that we get this, get this lined out. And, uh, one of my suggestions was, uh, we don't have, when we get those absentee ballots out, we don't get them out in, in time. And, and they come out after the first March, or the March before the, the, the June election. And that doesn't give a whole lot of time to, uh, send these things out. And the way the mail runs today, if you go across country, it could be ten days at least, we, we get anything. And most of our shareholders are up in age now and they'll get it back to, in time, that's one big issue. I would just, one suggestion I would make is move that March payment back to December and that gives us another, uh, probably six months to get ready for the June election. To get, to get the absentee ballots out, that is one of my suggestions. But, but, um, uh, I just brought, we want to bring it to the council to make it official, uh, who, who wants to be on this committee. We won't meet on all the time, but we'll meet from time to time and, uh, discuss these issues and bring it back to the council and vote on it to make it official.
Uh, I only have one question, you say move back a payment?
Uh, what it is on the absentee ballot, you can't do anything until March payment is paid out to the following June when, when the June election comes in. And that don't give, that don't give the absentee ballot enough time to be, be brought, brought to the attention of the voters, sent out by mail. And, uh, you give them a time to fill it out and get it back, by the time they fill it out and get it back, it's probably more than likely in May, you know? And then that's why that causes a lot of discrepancies. And also, we, we, we kind of talked about moving the, uh, uh, instead of sending those absentee ballots to the post office, sending them up here, up here to the.
Oh, no.
The requests.
That's just, that's just, that's just.
The request.
The request for an absentee ballot.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so these are discussions that we, that we can have at our, you know, in our committee meetings?
Oh, yes.
Right now, I think what, what the second chair's trying to get at, and we talked about it, I, I attended the, the preliminary meeting that he's speaking of. Uh, is that we want to formally create this committee.
Yes.
And according to Article Five, under our bylaws, Article Five, OSAGE Mineral Council Committees is the title. Uh, under five point one point two, I'll read it, says, "The OSAGE Mineral Council shall establish and appoint members to serve on all committees as may be deemed necessary." So we are wanting to form a committee, uh, which is one of the standing committees in our bylaws, uh, listed, referred to as the election committee. So, uh, I'll make the motion that this council establish, create an election committee. And whoever among us that would like to participate as committee members, uh, so indicate today in.
Yes.
Not, not that in the future that we couldn't add to it. Uh, the chairman is always a, uh, a member at, you know, of all committees, uh, without having to be stated as such. But whoever else would might like to be on the committee and it can be all. Uh, but, but I make the motion that we, that this council create an election committee for the Association of Mineral Council Five today. And, and then whoever wants to be on it can join. I don't, I think, okay, let me read it again, "It shall be established and appoint members." So we need to appoint members under this resolution, let's go ahead and appoint members.
I think I have to have the resolution first that we're going to do that, or am I allowed to appoint them in the resolution?
You can say, create an, an election committee consisting of.
Council members.
Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe the specific council members.
Counsel?
I'd like to not make Councilman Shackelford, since he got the most votes on the last election.
Demand.
To do what?
To be on the election committee.
Well, I'll be on it, you don't have to be nominated.
Did I just hear that?
You don't have to nominate people, whoever could be on it can be possibly on it, but I also think that you guys should be careful of having a forum and if.
Right.
It's bad, this is.
So, so, so committee has to have a forum?
Let me, if I can.
Yes, sir.
I think what Lacy, Ms. Reynolds is indicating is we've always tried to keep it below a forum vote. So four could carry a vote in a committee and that's just, just a caution that something might happen and they make a decision without.
Well, that goes against our bylaws.
Okay, not, but I think that's what you're saying.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
That's why, you know, if we go with three, I would like to select here now, right there.
September is all right, because you all can participate, but Mrs. Reynolds is right, we're going to be reviewed just like I did under O M C three. And yeah, they're going to chat.
All the question.
Counsel, ready for the question?
Are we going to name the folks today or? Yeah. But, but I challenge, I challenge the, the, this quorum business, uh, for a committee and our bylaws do not say anything about the quorum. And I challenge that, I think that, uh, so, so the, the chairman is automatically one of the members. So now we're talking about a, a count, a committee of two people. Well, so that's what I'm saying, I don't think we need to limit it to a different forum.
I'm, I'm not, I'm only telling you what I heard, okay.
Well, I would draw my, uh, resolution, my motion, I would draw my motion. I formally withdraw my motion.
Then you will have to, you will have to take back your second. The formal motion is out of order, is that correct?
Okay, I'll take that one, sir.
And we'll get right back to. Now, I did remember the court case that we had to go fight for. I am allowed to do some of those, as chairman, and, uh, we can co- commit ourselves to the election that you guys are looking at and, uh, proceed. But we'll come to you for the debate.
The full council, is that what you're saying?
Just for the recommendations.
For the recommendations, okay.
Go ahead, second chair.
The reason I brought this up is because, uh, the discrepancies, there's discrepancies we had in the last election. There was people who came in here and protested and want to know what was going on and why this and why that. We, we don't, we want to avoid that the next round and, uh, if you, if you stop back and think about the elections, the last, the last three elections, it's decreasing. The top vote and, and when Andrew Yates got in in twenty ten, it was like, hey, it says eight hundred votes, in the last, last election, he got two hundred, a little over two hundred. Not any two hundred, I don't think.
So you brought him up, brought him loose.
It's decreasing is what I'm saying, so it's very important that we get every vote counted.
Well, let's just get real honest, you're running the nation, spending a billion dollars with less than ten percent of your voters.
That's why I brought this.
Thank you, we'll, we'll get, we'll take care of it.
Sure.
And as you're looking at and as you're seeing.
I see to make it to speed.
I'm not against the whole notion of the election system.
All I got to do is stand back and not look.
That's not great.
But I can't participate.
Don't worry about it, everybody, you know, everybody's going to be looking.
I, I don't think. I might have a comment here, when we had a bunch of committees. Mr. Rebar, we had the Production and Development Committee, I think we had four on air.
I did.
Maybe five.
When I showed up, it was five.
There was five.
That's why I challenge it, I don't, I'm not, I don't think I'm challenging, I just think that's, I'm just reiterating.
If you do not have a quorum vote as a council, I mean, called regular meeting.
Right.
You're fired, when you're in a committee meeting, you're not doing a resolution in your council, you're doing a recommendation to your council. So let's just stay with that and quit trying to cut it out.
I believe that, Chairman, you're right, the Open Meetings Act with amendments, you have to call the meeting, announce what we're doing. That was, that's what keeps us protected.
Yes.
As a full council. So I think if we're okay, I'm just reiterating what Lacy was saying, not something I think is a deal killer. I think we could pass the resolution and move forward.
We will, uh, write it to, ban it on seventeen to get it through. That's, that's what we need to do.
I just don't want to be limited to having two people on the committee.
You will not, sir.
You will be an officio committee member, being the chairperson person. So there can only be two of us be on this committee and I'm thinking that we need a committee of any one of us that want to be on it, that way it used to be. On OSAGE Mineral Council Board, whoever want to be on the committee could be on the committee and then those committee members choose a chairman for the committee. That's the way we used to do it.
And only recommendations to the council for the vote.
Yeah, they didn't make any decisions, they just came up.
Recommendations.
And discussed things and brought it, the chairperson of that committee.
And we brought it.
Look it up to the full council, uh, whenever it was deemed, uh, appropriate to do so. So I, I, if, if you all are okay without worrying about the quorum, I'm making a motion to form this election committee. And whoever would like to join it, say so today and we'll put them in the book.
I'll second.
Okay, well, I'm making a motion to form the election committee. And whoever among us would like to be committee members, say so now and they'll be entered in the resolution as an originating, originating, uh, committee member.
I'll second.
And then I'll, Paul Rebar would like to be on the committee and I volunteered to serve.
You, you don't mention it first.
And I'll, I'll be chairperson of it if, uh, if, if the full committee members so, uh, uh, choose to, uh, let me debate that. But I, for one, would like to be on the election.
I don't know, I've judged for, for elections, random, five governments.
Okay, Byron, Red Eagle said he would like to be on the committee, come on. You want to be on the committee, Jim?
Yeah.
Anthony?
Yeah.
I'll help out.
I mean, Mr. Shackelford, and Mr. Tishewala, and Mr. Rebar.
That's fine.
Right now, we have Councilman Rebar, Councilman Red Eagle, Councilman Tishewala, and do I hear?
Yes.
Just say yes.
Oh, okay, and we have a Councilman Shackelford.
Call for the vote.
Yeah.
Everybody good?
Good.
I'm looking at my brothers every. You're good?
Good.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Excuse me, Lacy, we reestablished the, wanting the committee now, so they're going to go ahead and do the resolution, excuse me.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Bigwars?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Yes.
I'm going in the wrong order, sorry.
He said yes, yes.
No, quit, not quit.
You have some red corn.
Yeah.
I'm going down instead of across. Motion passes.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for the consideration. I, I will say this is that, you know, the nation spends a lot of money on their offices open every, all year, its staff. You and I had talked about some other things, but I'm going to go ahead and say it in a public arena, nation just gave themselves races as Congress.
Oh, let's talk about that.
I want you to talk about that next meeting because I am, I am going to need that. Secondary, on this election.
Baby needs a new pair of shoes.
Granddaughter, I just had a grandson being the rim on a Toyota. This is how much I'm going to be dropping here Saturday. With that being said, I do want to ask you that, uh, we need to look at all of our options. We did, we need to look at other funding available to the nation to take care of exactly this. Our procedures are working with the nation, our, the electoral is most important, it's really important, I think everybody in this room, isn't it? Everybody, so with that being said, I'd like to have a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Redcorn, second, by Second Chair, Red Eagle, call for the question, please. Approval of the meeting minutes.
Okay, Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Bigwars?
Yes.
Councilman Tishewala?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
And Councilman Shackelford?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, with that, I'd like to entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Shackelford, seconded by Councilman Tishewala, call for the question, please. Don't you dare knock them down.
Did you guys order something?
I know, we did, no.
Councilman Bigwars? Councilman Bigwars? A jerk.
A jerk?
Tishwalla. Uh, Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Good.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're called.
Thank you all. Something in brown facts.
What happened was we ordered some meat pies, and the meat pie lady just dropped them off.
Are these ours or seven, tripped into those? No, thank you, no, seriously.
Seriously.
I'm, I'm, I'm ordering a meat pie.